Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners to order. Today is May 28, 2021. It's nine o'clock in the morning. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this morning. With that, we'll go on to item three, any citizen desiring to be heard. Hearing none. Item four, consideration of possible action on minutes of May 14th and 19th, 2021.
I will move to approve. I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are acknowledged, approved, or acknowledged, however that's supposed to be done. All right. Item five, open sealed bid number 2021-2-21. There's a lot of twos in there. For spray foam insulation on the roof of Sheep Barn at the Logan County Fairgrounds. Consideration of possible action on the bid.
The bid needs, uh, will be canceled. The bid had a pre-bid conference requirement. No vendors appeared. Therefore, we do not have a qualified vendor on the bid. We have been in contact with some vendors. This is actually going to come in as a project under the $50,000 on public property under the competitive bidding out. We're going to seek written proposals to bring back to the board.
Okay. So no action on item five. Item six, consideration of possible action to letter of support for grant application of Logan County Health Department to Centers for Disease Control and Prevention.
I sent that out to y'all.
I did. I got, I read it and I thought it was an odd letter. A bit presumptuous that we were excited about that because the board doesn't get excited about a lot of things unless it's budget. We have to have this way.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the grant application for the Health Department. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item seven, consideration of possible action on service agreement with Westail Unicom for county phone system.
Okay, so this is following up with the selection of Westail. This just requires the chairman's signature at the marked locations.
Have we, I know we've looked at some of this stuff, but have we gotten a set date yet on when they're going to install this? After?
Everything's being looked at as after July 1st. And he's got to order the phones. I'm still trying to get everyone to give me that information. I'm still putting it together, but it's all looking at after July 1st.
Okay. Does that need an action?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the service agreement with Westail Unicom. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Chairman, I have nothing for item eight, but I do nine.
Thank you, ma'am. Item nine, consideration of possible action on resolution appointing receiving officers for various accounts.
We have one from District Three.
I'll make a word for it. I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 10, consideration of possible action on consent agenda. Here we go.
Hey, Ron.
It's closed down.
Monty, at least there's no broken glass to break your wrist.
Yeah. That's true.
It's our carpenter friend, you know, asking when he could start. I guess I should ask him also when to finish. Now, he's done a good job. How about what this guy's doing on? For the price, he's done a pretty good job for us. That's where I can put it there. I just want to keep payroll stack on stack.
Yes.
Marvin, that one that you just put in the stack, I think that stuff's speaking for you down at the bottom.
It does. Equalize. You just don't want that to have to come back inside of you. Appreciate that. Thanks very much.
Election board spending for more than time and alcohol leverage tax.
Chris, this is your favorite major.
My showtime. I always like getting my signature first. Ooh. Lot better than the water this time.
You say a lot better than the water?
Let's see. I could compare it to, never mind. I'm not even gonna do that.
Wow. So this is maybe Gennady.
Maybe Jeffries water.
St. Patty's Day. St. Patty's Day? Yes.
District Three was up. I mean Crescent was up. If they sell cigarettes back up there in Crescent, it's up.
District Three's always got the most.
Y'all realize that that is calculated like they do highway where everyone's in the pot and then it's.
I was looking at the big number.
So we get part of the pot sales too?
No, not yet.
I thought that's what you said. You said it's part of the pot. That's what I thought you said.
Got breaking news this morning. Oh, it's just for you.
Hometown rental and feed.
I get it. I get the statement, too.
Almost there. Maybe.
Seem like there were a lot more, uh... Of those today.
P.O.s. It's in the middle. I felt like it's.
Linkets.
Yeah. Little blankets and quilts and bedspreads and such.
Once Marvin gets caught, I will move to approve consent agenda.
You're plodding down behind him. See, if I was Detroit and sat down on this thing, I'd be done.
Look down there, Charlie.
I'll second Cody's motion if we don't see anything, don't we? No wire.
I didn't notice anything happening. I'll watch your field. Okay, I have a motion and a second on consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 11, consideration of possible action on claims for payment on May 20, 21.
Eighty-nine cents over.
Whether it's a penny or a thousand dollars, it's over and over. Yeah.
Yeah. I think that was at a... Logan County asphalt thing.
Hometown fee.
Oh, hometown.
Yeah, this is what happens when you have one company pay you road and another company spray tack for you. As we get a little out of compliance on that overage, that is the...
There's my penny over. I knew they were coming. That was Logan County asphalt. Troy, who needs this on here?
Who's in Florida?
I think it'd be the receiving officer, right?
Okay. Be for sheriff. I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I will second the motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 12, consideration of possible action on purchase card payments for May 20, 21.
The form normally said here, I couldn't get it to open. Here's a copy. You know, I always bring a copy to P.O.s. If you'd just all sign across here, that would be.
All three of them in the good light.
Yeah, please.
Who've got a copy of the paperclip?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the P. Guard payments.
I will second the motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve purchase card payments. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 13, any citizens desiring to be heard. Hearing none. We'll move on to item 14. Comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners or other officers and department heads. I'll start with other officers and department heads.
I got my monthly activity report, actually, done.
Okay. Normally, we put that activity report on the agenda, but go ahead.
Oh, okay.
You're on this one, but yeah. But we don't take an action other than accept the...
And I need a copy.
Yeah.
Oh, you need a copy.
You can head on.
Um, yes. Stephen, just shoot me an email and let me know when, and then I'll make it into the item.
Okay. I usually just, I've been doing it for the last month.
Ten years when you get...
Yeah.
So would you talk a little bit about what you're helping us out with on the storm debris stuff? I'd like to give you a little credit for that because you're doing a heck of a job for us on that.
Yeah, so I finally was able to get all of District One's labor done for the October ice storm. And I got from, uh, whenever it was declared at the end of October till March 31st completed and met with Jennifer from District One and got a bunch of information from her. And it came out to about $80,000 in labor reimbursement just from October to March 31st on debris cleanup. I'm still working on the equipment reimbursement and the FEMA cost codes on that, so.
Okay. Again, I think what you're talking about is all of the FEMA codes and all the what FEMA allows and going through all those and cross-reference and all the labor that we put in and what FEMA will allow us and totaling all that up. We really appreciate your help on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna start working on getting with District Two and start working on theirs.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to chat about, the flood that we had?
Yeah, last, I was out till about eight o'clock last night with the weather and the flooding and District Two Commissioner Cody Ellis. Called him to clean out some storm drainage ditches where it was backed up causing flooding on the road. I saw your guys out in District One moving trees off the road from the high winds and putting up barricades, so we got, I think we got a, I've seen anywhere from four to five inches reported, so.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you, Stephen. Appreciate it.
Yep.
You're done. Thanks a lot. Sheriff, that road, you got anything for the crowd?
No, we're just locking up and letting them go. Got maybe a hundred and, about a hundred and twenty, twenty-five inmates in our facility right now.
Okay.
Just going where needed.
That reminds me, Karen, with all of this turnover because of McGirt and they're not being released, but they're going to be turned over out of state and becoming federal, are you seeing an increase in housing? Because I know federal doesn't, I mean, they're picky about what jail they use, so I didn't know if that...
We're not seeing any McGirt calls. My goodness.
Well, I just thought you might because being already federally approved housing.
And I don't know how many cases they're actually taking. That's another issue.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Monty, anything else you need?
That and...
Oh, let me ask the county clerk. She's actually an elected official, so she is here.
Surprising, isn't that?
Because we just expect you to be here always.
Um, nothing. I have worked on getting the committee that the board wanted set up for ARPA funding, and we're still getting all of that put in place. And, um, I'm still working on making a couple of other changes as far as some of the paperwork that will come across this table, so hopefully we can make a few more little adjustments.
All right. Thank you, Ma'am.
I guess I do have a question.
Did we ever hear back from the roof?
No. I've tried to call them. Have not received anything back from them.
I reached out to him and he's been on vacation. He just got back yesterday. I think he's gonna try and get us something.
Okay.
But please stay on his...
Yep.
Put some salt on his tail feathers a little bit. So anything else, Cody?
Uh, no, just trying to clean up after last night and yesterday and get some drainage dishes cleared out. We've got more rain coming than forecasted, so of course we can't always go off that, but trying to get everything done as quickly as we can. We've got some material in the yard, so we can put some surge rock and shale in places that we need to that are washed out, so just be patient and we'll get it fixed as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. I've got one thing that I did want to talk about, and that's yesterday was what they call signed eye at the State Legislature. And one of the things that happened this year is historic as far as county governments are concerned. This is the first time in over 45 years that any significant change to how county roads and bridges are funded has been made at the State Legislature. This year, they've approved redirecting $30 million of SERF money. So it's not an increase in taxes. It's a reappropriation of taxes directly to the counties. So we ran a bill back in 2015 to get all of that money redirected to counties, and it was kind of, it fell on some deaf ears with our fellow commissioners. But this year, that 30% was, or 25% of the $120 million that's kept for SERF that goes to...
that's capped for SURF that goes to ODOT is coming directly to the counties now. And the encouraging thing is the method that they use to calculate how much money each county gets, and I have to credit Senator Hall with putting, helping to get that language put in there. He's, he actually listened when we talked about asset management and funding county roads and bridges according to assets. So the way that it's broken up is by the number of rural road miles that you have and the number of bridges that you have and the deficient bridges. Until 2026, the funding, one-third of the funding will be allocated based on the number of deficient bridges a county has. Well, we have two hundred, and we have a hundred plus deficient bridges, so that's gonna help Logan County out quite a bit. So the one thing that wasn't included in that, which I was really encouraged to see, was total population of the county, because what's happened in the past and the way county roads and bridges are funded today is based primarily on population. So the larger metropolitan counties get the majority of county road funds, and the counties aren't responsible to maintain the roads in those metropolitan areas where those people are counted. So this is, I think this is quite a bit more equitable, as they say, it's a fair thing. Is it perfect? Probably not, but it's the best thing that we've seen in forty-five years in county government, and I wanted to personally thank Senator Hall for his efforts to get that done for us this year. You know how they're dividing it this year, or this time, off the road miles? I think they'll do that amongst the districts as well.
Well, we could certainly talk about that after Rick districted, Monty.
I think we ought to go off road miles.
Well, road miles, bridges, you know, smiles and, you know, all that stuff.
I think we'll follow the same pattern.
Follow the same pattern, okay. So we'll do, we can do both, right? So we get a lot of our money from, based on population from the state, and then it's just twenty-five percent based on the others, so, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. We could probably do this. All right, so I see your man in back's looking at his watch, so I'm done with the...
Text message.
Item fourteen. Yeah, sure. Yeah, are you done yet? They do the nail on. Are we there yet? All right, I'll entertain the motion on item fifteen.
I'll move with adjournment.
I will second.
We are adjourned, thank you, gentlemen.